You can't hear me? You hear me now? Is this thing working? How's that? Okay. But everybody have a seat and then we could get started, please. We're not starting until you sit down. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I think of anything else, if you have your cellphones on, would you turn them to mute, please? I'd better do mine, too. Okay. My name is Bob Welch, W L C H. I'm the hearing officer by contract with Department of Natural Resources. I'm going to act as the moderator today. Basically, I'll be calling the names out and telling people where to stand and all that kind of stuff. As you know, we're meeting tonight in regards to the proposed administrative rules relating to the Hydraulic Fracturing Regulatory Act. These rules have been proposed. They're not the final rules. And one of the reasons we're here tonight, and we're going to be in four other towns in the state of Illinois, all the way down to Carbondale, Decatur, Effingham, and Ina, Illinois, Red Lake, doing the same thing we're doing here. Before we get to the purpose of the hearing, I'm going to introduce the people who are up here, sitting beside me. See, on my far right here is Nick San Diego. He's an attorney with the IDNR's Office of Legal Counsel. Beside me is Brendan Daly, and he's the IDNR Legislative Counsel. Next to me here is Mitch Cohen. He's the Director of the Office of Oil and Gas Resources Management. Next to Mitch is Robert Muhl. He's also an attorney with the Legal Counsel Office. And finally, Jim Stevens, down on the far left, is a Well Inspector with the Office of Oil and Gas Resources Management. Okay? Now, as to the purpose of why we're here tonight. As you're all aware, this past summer, the General Assembly passed, and the Governor signed, the Hydraulic Fracturing Regulatory Act. This act applies to all wells where only high-volume horizontal hydraulic fracturing operations will occur in Illinois. This act gave to IDNR the primary authority to administer and enforce the provisions of the act. The act further requires the department to adopt rules, or shall adopt rules, as necessary to accomplish the purposes of this act. And again, that's why we're here. We're talking about those rules, the draft rules that have been proposed, and hopefully we'll get some help from you people as to the final draft. The administrative rulemaking process is designed to allow interested parties the opportunity to actively participate in the rulemaking process through public comments. These public hearings, at which many diverse opinions may be heard, are strongly supported by IDNR in a spirit of openness and transparency. Now, the purpose of this public hearing is to allow members of the public to express their views and comments related to the proposed hydraulic fracturing administrative rules, which have been drafted in response to the act. Now, many of you may be opposed to the idea of hydraulic fracturing, and I kind of got a hint of that when I came in. However, that train has left the station. And I repeat, I repeat, the General Assembly and the Governor, the General Assembly passed it, and the Governor signed the legislation. Well, not here it can't, ma'am. All right, now, we're going to, we're going to, here's, we're going to make some rules here right now, okay? Well, it's up to you people. You've got two hours. If you want to do it by yelling at me or doing that, you can use up your two hours that way. If you want to add to the system, the process, by making valid comments and recommendations, we want to hear that. But you can hold up your signs and do all that, but that's not going to accomplish a whole lot. But if you wanted to help, help draft the rules, I suggest you be a little more positive, okay? Ah, where was I? You threw me off. Your input will assist IDNR in adopting rules that assure that the process is done in a manner that is environmentally sound and consistent with the law. Now, these gentlemen up here beside me are here to listen to your comments and to make notes in regard to your comments. Also, we have a court reporter down here who's going to take down everything we say. When you come up here to talk, we'd appreciate it if you not only tell us what your name is, but spell your last name, so that we'll have a good record of that. I know from experience that court reporters get very upset if they can't spell the names right, and it's not their fault. These gentlemen are here because they're interested in hearing from you. Due to the time limitations, because all these people want to talk, and we've only got two hours, they're not going to respond, they're not going to, they're not here to talk to you, they're here to listen to you, okay? This isn't going to be a question and answer. This is a public comment hearing, and we want to hear your comments. Now, throughout the public comment period, IDNR is going to accept, and upon consideration, make changes to the proposed rules before filing for second notice. IDNR fully anticipates and expects changes to be made as part of the process. In other words, the regs that are on the Internet right now are a draft, they're a proposal. So don't get all wound up about that, because they can be changed, they can all be changed. And that's why we're here, is to hear what changes you think are necessary. So that, you know, this can be a very, very positive hearing, if you all take part in that spirit. As far as the format is concerned, we're going to be shuffling people around. Everybody fill out a card who wanted to speak, so you can see how many there are, and I don't know that will get to all of you. But you're going to get four minutes, and we're going to ask you not to use up more than the four minutes, because you're using up time that belongs to everybody else. Now, Brendan here has shuffled these, like the card shark that he is, and, and we'll be picking those names in the order that they're sitting there right now. What we're going to do is, I'm trying to read my notes here, have you come up here, and after you finish your statement, if you've got a written version of your statement, give it to Brendan, he's got a box we're going to put in there. All these things will be reviewed at a later date. Now, as far as the logistics is concerned, stick with me now, okay? I want to call, once we get started, I'll be rolling, okay? I want to call four names, and we're going to have two stand here, and we might have to move that mic over a little bit, so I don't step on this lady's toes, and two here. And then, when these two people talk in the front, we're going to call two more names, and they'll come in behind those people. So we'll always have somebody on deck, as it were, so that there's no waiting for somebody to trip over somebody coming up here. We'll have somebody ready to go. So that's what we're going to do. I think you're okay, ma'am. It's over here I'm more worried about. Yeah, it'll work out. If the first person falls down, we'll, we'll know what to do. Now, when it's your turn to speak, please introduce yourself by your name, obviously, and the city where you come from, or where you live, I guess it'd be better phrased. Now, if you belong to an organization and you want to include that, let us know, that's fine. If your comment relates to a specific rule or section of the proposed administrative rules, and you know the rule or section number, it'd be helpful to let us know what rule or section number you're talking about. Otherwise, just go ahead with your comment. If you've got a written statement you want to read that, that's fine, too. Now, the reason I've got Brendan sitting here beside me is because we're going to stick to the four-minute limitation. And like I said, if you go beyond that, you're just taking time from somebody else who wants to talk, and we want to just get as many people up here to comment as possible. So Brendan, when you pass the three-minute mark, is going to do that. He's going to hold up a little sign that says you've got one minute left. When you get down to 30 seconds, I'm supposed to make some kind of a verbal comment. I'll do something to say 30 seconds, some brilliant thing like that, I guess. Now... That's good. I'll have to remember that. Now, now, remember, the sole purpose of this hearing is to hear comments and suggestions from the public in regard to the proposed administrative regulations. It's not a question-and-answer session. It's not about whether fracking is good or bad. It's about helping IDNR to make these rules better, okay? That's, that's the purpose here. Anything that's not addressed to that is not going to be helpful, and it's not going to help us achieve the goal of why we're all here tonight. So please address your statements or comments to the proposed administrative regulations, okay? Now, we're going to call some names. We've been asked, and as a courtesy, we're going to allow the Attorney General, we're told Attorney General or representative, if the Attorney General wants to make a comment also. So we're going to have this gentleman come up, and I'm going to call three more names, so there won't be any, any hesitation. You can just stand either one, it's fine. Okay, we're going to call Jessica Bryant from Greenpeace. Jessica? Is she here? Okay. Jessica, you'll stand behind this gentleman here. And then Jill Paulus, P-A-U-L-U-S. And Ms. Paulus will stand.
Sir, can I use my time?
What'd she say?
They want to switch.
I don't care, yeah. You had a designated speaker? Okay. So you're taking... Dr. Laura Chamberlain? Dr. Chamberlain? What's going on there? No, you two are at the other mic. The other microphone. There you go. Okay, all right. Tell us your name and your organization, please.
Good evening. My name is James Gignac, G-I-G-N-A-C. I serve as the Environmental and Energy Counsel to Illinois Attorney General Lisa Madigan. Attorney General has longstanding and significant concerns about large-scale hydraulic fracturing in Illinois and its potential impacts on the people of our state. So she worked alongside the Illinois Environmental Council, the Natural Resources Defense Council, the Environmental Law and Policy Center, Sierra Club, and other environmental advocates to pass the strongest bill possible. Attorney General Madigan fought to ensure that Illinois developed a rigorous set of requirements to govern high-volume fracking. These requirements were urgently needed because, prior to the Hydraulic Fracturing Act being passed, there were no regulations specific to the practice in Illinois. Now, the Department of Natural Resources is developing regulations to implement the Act, which is a necessary and important step, and the subject of this evening's hearing. The Attorney General believes that the department has put forth many helpful clarifications and useful details in the proposed rulemaking. However, there are numerous areas in need of revisions to ensure that the proposed regulations properly reflect the language and intent of the Act. Our office will discuss our concerns in detail in the form of written comments, which we will submit by January 3rd. For purposes of tonight's hearing, I would just like to highlight a portion of those concerns. First, the Act contains an important tool for citizens, municipalities, and enforcement agencies to use in the event of water contamination. Referred to as a rebuttable presumption, Section 1-85 of the Act places the burden on the fracking operator to establish that water pollution to nearby wells was not caused by its drilling activities. The proposed regulations, however, attempt to add limitations on the rebuttable presumption of water pollution that do not appear in the Act, such as the types of water quality data and testing parameters that may be used. The department should not restrict the ability of citizens to obtain relief if their water wells are contaminated. Second, a key part of the Act prohibits the use of open pits to store fracking wastewater. In the event of unanticipated or unexpected flowback conditions, the Act does allow the use of properly constructed lined reserve pits to capture flowback, but only on a temporary basis. Section 1-75(c) of the Act requires that any flowback captured in the pits must be removed from the site within seven days. The proposed regulations are inconsistent with the Act in that they would allow the seven-day time period for removal to begin when the hydraulic fracturing operations are completed, instead of seven days from when flowback is captured in the pits. This must be corrected. Third, the Act contains an important provision allowing disclosure of trade-secret-protected chemical information to health professionals for purposes of medical treatment. The proposed regulations must be changed so that, in the event of an emergency, medical personnel have one central point of contact available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, from which to obtain information for a patient exposed to a trade-secret-protected chemical. Fourth, we urge the department to hold public hearings on permits in the county where the proposed well site would be located, and to ensure that citizens who may be adversely affected have a full and fair opportunity to participate in the hearings. The proposed rules unnecessarily and unfairly place a burden of proof upon citizens to establish the validity of their concerns in the hearing process. That should be removed. The Act clearly states that it is ultimately up to the permit applicant to demonstrate to the department's satisfaction that its proposed operations will comply with the law and protect public health and safety. We look forward to providing additional input on these and other topics where more work is needed, including, but not limited to, the currently low levels of administrative fines, the lack of a conversion factor for nitrogen foam, and the lack of retroactivity in the requirements in our forthcoming written comments. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jessica Bryant.
Jessica, it wasn't your turn, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead, Jessica.
Okay, thank you. B-R-Y-A-N-T. In case you couldn't tell, I'm here with Greenpeace. I actually hadn't planned on talking, but the lovely redhead in the back convinced me to do it. And of course, that meant I was called first, because that's just how the world works. Before I make my comment, I would like to request that there are additional hearings. I'm glad that there was a hearing today, but I, and that's great, and I'm glad that that happened. But 11 days is not enough for people to prepare for this sort of thing. I can only assume that 11 days were given because people hoped that no one would show up. So that's frustrating. So I hope that there are more, you know, especially considering it's a day and a half before Thanksgiving, and people are, you know, planning their family get-togethers. And I would love it if there was also one in Bloomington as well, because Bloomington is a huge population, and I'm sure is also would love to be represented on this issue. So, yeah, we should do that. Second of all, I'm pretty sure that although maybe not everyone in this room can agree that fracking altogether is a bad thing, I'm sure that everyone in this room can agree that cancer is bad. Yeah. No one likes cancer. And there are over 350 chemicals that are used in the fracking process, some of which are really scary, like benzene. Benzene is a known carcinogen. It is listed as a hazardous contaminant in the Safe Drinking Water Act. In case there's anyone in here that doesn't know, carcinogen means that it causes cancer. It's also lead. I mean, it's not a coincidence that you see billboards on the side of the road that say, you know, "Don't let your kids eat lead paint chips." You know, like, the government has programs to remove lead from your home. Why are we using it to pump water into the ground? Why is it in there? Formaldehyde, another carcinogen. Formaldehyde causes lung damage, reproductive problems for women over long-term exposure. It's also a carcinogen. So why on earth are we allowing this stuff, this contaminated water with known carcinogens in it, to be in open-air containers, open-air pools, instead of a closed container? That's crazy. Anyone knows, if it rains, that's going to spill out. Also, it can just leak into the groundwater. Why would we want to drink this stuff? I mean, it's not, I mean, I'm not even up here for me. I'm up here for the kids that I might have one day. I mean, that's crazy. Long-term exposure to this stuff will kill us. It will kill us. What are we doing? It's crazy. There are 1 million fracking wells nationwide, 1 million. Industry itself has admitted that at least 5% of those wells have failed. In case you're not good at math, that is 50,000 wells. 50,000 wells! That's 1,000 for every single state. What are the chances that you live really close to one of those wells? They're really, really high. That's crazy. That means that the cement casing, when they fail, the cement casing cracks because of the high pressure from the water that's being pumped into the ground. That means that that water, in large portions, is being pumped into the water that you drink every day. That you drink every day. That you drink every day. I mean, I know that we need natural gas. I know it, I understand. I have a gas burner in my house. I know that we need it, but we need to do it in the safest way possible so that we are not killing ourselves, because it just seems crazy. I mean, you know, if, if I had the choice between doing something that might harm me and doing something that might not, I'm not stupid, I'm going to do the thing that I know is not going to hurt me. Thank you.
That was well said. We're going to call one more, two more names, so that we have people lined up. You two confused me, and I don't know who's who, but...
Sorry about that.
We're going to call Linda, it's Dr. Linda, I guess, Forrest, is that it? Does that say Forrest? Yeah. Okay. And Marla, okay. Schuman, is that what that says? Marla Schuman, from C-L-A-F. Looks like S-H-U-M-A-N. The first name's Marla, or maybe it's, that's Marla, isn't it? Okay, well, we'll put her back in the deck, I guess. Is she? Okay, now, ma'am, what is your name?
My name is Jill Paulus. I'm a member of a lot of groups, Sierra Club, Frack Free, The Wild Ones, which is for wild plants. And that is also impacted by natural gas. The plants are dying. The one, one way they find dying, where they find natural gas leaks are by trees dying. So I'm coming here with a broad perspective, and I also feel that, yeah, this wasn't the most convenient day, right before Thanksgiving. However, for me, it's a time of gratitude, and I do feel very grateful for the life I've had, and I've used natural gas, and I do use it. But now, when I hear it running, I'm thinking... So, yes, I'm against fracking, and I do believe that the young people are focusing on the right things. I was at the Pioneer Conference, they're focusing on new soil, new community, less materialism. This can be done, and we can focus, instead of spending our money on the huge cost of fracking, we could be focusing on wind, solar, geothermal, and you're using a system and supporting a system which is dying, and it is death. So, you've got this system of green light, red light, and I have a paper for you on it, and I'm sure you're familiar with it. Oh, yeah, that's right. On induced seismicity. This is apparently kind of a nationwide idea of green light, red light, which you do have in your rules. So, to begin with...
All right, take your time.
Do you want me to take it? No. You know, you're greenlighting through the Madrid and Wabash Valley. I had been down to the IDNR with Dr. Laura in August, and we suggested, "Don't frac where there's already rolling earthquakes, one and two." But we're going to frac there, and we're not going to even worry about the green light until we get to yellow light. We might slow down, like, when we hit a five, which is even not the standards of the nationwide industry in the report that I'm going to give you. Illinois is becoming a poster child for risk, and one of the risks, and it's the one I'm talking about, and there are many more, are the earthquakes. So we're going to yellow light to five, and then, when we hit fives, and above, we're going to stop for three to six miles around the epicenter of a quake, and then we're going to figure out, according to your rules, how we can make the flow of the injection fluid, because we're talking about the injection wells, safe. We're going to control earthquakes. Well, that's hubris. That's what comes to my mind. Your penalties...
Thirty seconds.
How many minutes?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, your penalties are minimal, $50 for a first infraction, and somewhere I saw $2,000 for a cost to a life. That's not enough.
Ma'am, you spelled your last name, P-A-U-L-U-S, is that right, ma'am? Okay, thank you.
My name's Dr. Laura Chamberlain, and I'm going to give the official statements for Frack Free Illinois, which is a large coalition of community groups.
Okay, are we missing somebody?
You put me over here. I was over there.
No, but I called that Marla, whatever, and they said she was...
So anyways, I'm Dr. Laura Chamberlain, and I was told that a member of JCAR, Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, was going to be here, one of the staffers. Are they here?
I don't believe so, we haven't seen anyone.
Okay. Exactly. So, I'm going to give you one copy for all of the commissioners here, the council, and if you could get a copy to the JCAR members also, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, doctor. Okay. Now, let's hold on a minute, you get this...
That's not, no, 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 actually, I have comments. Yeah, exactly. So, we have three basic issues that we wanted to comment on. There's literally hundreds of holes in the rules, and we will be continuing to comment on them, but the chemical disclosure aspect of it in 245720 is really reprehensible. It really is. I'm a family physician, and it is absolutely inconscionable that we're forcing our ER physicians and our emergency personnel to track down the frackers in the middle of the night to try to find out one of the hundreds of chemicals that a frac worker might have been exposed to, or a family that ran into one of these trucks that are carrying around this produced, radioactive-produced water. It's unconscionable. We were at the IDNR in August, and we asked them to do something that is expressly permitted in the bill. In the Public Act, in Section 177, it says that the department can furnish, under the claimed-secret aspects of it, of the chemical disclosure, they can furnish the entire amount of the chemicals to county public health directors, emergency managers, fire department chiefs, directors of the Illinois Department of Public Health. So right in the Act, the department could transfer the responsibility for the chemical disclosure to the Illinois Department of Public Health. We recommend that. We have talked about this with Dr. Hasberg and Dr. Gill. We've talked about it with Director Mark Miller. We highly recommend that you transfer the entire responsibility of chemical disclosure to the Illinois Department of Public Health, as it says so in the Act. Thank you very much. They are health professionals, they'll know what to do about it. It is not for physicians in this state to tell the IDNR why they want, why they need the chemical disclosure, and also, it is not for physicians in this state to have to sign agreements, exactly, non-disclosure agreements, after they've had a patient. We in the medical community learn from each other when we have cases like this that come into the ER, and we need to be able to use the standards that are already relevant in the medical community for all medical cases, including those that are involved on the frac field. I want to bring your attention to another issue, too. We have a paper on radioactivity, and we are extremely concerned about the radioactivity, that it's going to be brought up in the entire waste stream of these frac fields. So I encourage you to look at that paper. We have several very significant recommendations for you there. But the third thing that is very important is, we've been in communication with Dr. Hamburger, who is at Indiana University, and he is probably the world's premier expert on the Wabash Valley earthquake zone. And Mr. Mule, he's sent you a letter today, and he has downgraded every single one of the stages of the green and yellow and red lights. This gentleman has written a book on the Wabash Valley earthquake zones. He's a member of the U.S. Hazards Advisory Committee. I would highly recommend that you listen to what he has to say. He wants the green lights downgraded from three to two. He wants the red lights, the yellow lights downgraded from three to five to two to four. He wants the red lights downgraded to four, so that it would be more protective to the Illinois citizens. We run a huge risk of seismic events down in the New Madrid and the Wabash Valley. Please, I really ask you to listen to the experts on this. If you would like some more expert advice on how to manage the seismicity, we would be happy to help you with that as well.
Okay, thank you, doctor. Thank you. I've got to get back in control of this here. Dave Kraft, Dave Kraft, if you'll stand behind this Forrest, is that right? Okay. Dr. Forrest, I'm sorry. And Ira Abrams. Ira Abrams. One last try. Ira Abrams, Sierra Club. Throw them back in there. Well, okay, Linda Lewison, Sierra Club. Well, you know, they don't want to be in here. Linda Lewison?
She's there.
Okay. All right, doctor, is it Forrest, F-O-R-S-T?
Yes, sir. Okay. My name is Linda Forrest, F-O-R-S-T. I'm the head of Environmental and Occupational Health Sciences here in the School of Public Health at UIC. I'm also a medical doctor, trained in internal and occupational medicine and in public health. I've spent my career providing health care to workers and the public related to hazardous exposures in the workplace and in the general environment. I also conduct research and teach, and I have the privilege of working with a lot of environmental health scientists who are amazing. Today, I'm here to express my concern about Subpart G of the proposed regulations on hydraulic fracturing in Illinois. This pertains to emergency response and disclosure of the contents of the hydro-fracturing fluid. I'm concerned that the draft regulations strike an inappropriate balance between the protection of trade secrets and the protection of human health. Those who drafted Subpart G are undoubtedly familiar with OSHA Hazard Communication Standard. The current standard requires that companies have material safety data sheets on-site and make them available to workers and their representatives. Workers are entitled to know what they are working with in order to make informed decisions. In the proposed IDNR regulations, health care providers who are treating workers and others will need to track down exposure information at IDNR during business hours or to locate the proprietor of the specific well site after hours. This is a tremendous barrier to treating workers and members of the public sickened by hazardous exposures. In an emergency, time spent tracking down this information can mean the difference between life and death. I'm also quite sure that the EPA's Community Right to Know Act, EPRA, is familiar to those who drafted these regulations. It stresses the importance of community knowledge of local hazards and hazardous substances for the purposes of emergency planning. When Governor Quinn signed the HIFRA into law, it was touted as the most stringent and protective fracking law in the nation. These brass-tacks regulations emphasizing protection of trade secrets water it down. These are the changes to the proposed rules that I believe need to be made in order to protect the health of the public. First, the new OSHA Hazard Communication Standard will require moving to the Global Harmonization System before 2015. Illinois should require implementation of the new standard now in order to avoid having to rewrite this reg in another year. Number two, both statute and regulations acknowledge the need for health care workers to have immediate information about the chemicals involved in a health emergency irrespective of claims of trade secrets. As written, the regulations place the burden on the treating physician. Instead, the Illinois Poison Center could function effectively as a repository of this information. The IPC has a hotline that's available 24/7. IPC understands workplace and environmental hazards and how to communicate with health care providers. Health care providers and residents are already familiar with the Poison Center. And finally, it's hooked into a disaster management plan in the state. IDNR can leverage this high-quality resource by adjusting the regs to specify the sharing of lists of chemicals with IPC and making IPC an agent of the state for this purpose. Revenues generated from permitting and taxation should be directed to support IPC, a nonprofit for this additional work. Third, IDNR should work with the Illinois Department of Public Health to establish health surveillance for outcomes related to the exposure hazards of hydraulic fracturing process. Acute health effects can be anticipated as well as long-term health effects. There are existing databases that can be used to track these health disorders over time. A real-time and longitudinal surveillance system should be put in place with resources allocated from the revenues generated by hydraulic fracturing work. Finally, other research and tracking should be mandated with funds set aside. A health impact assessment, ongoing case studies of counties and towns that are affected will shed light on the impact and inform people of the state and people of other states. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I look forward to these and other changes in the regulations that better express the language and the intent of the law.
Thank you, doctor. I had neglected to mention earlier when we started, after the representative from the Attorney General spoke, since the Attorney General is not really, I don't consider really part of the public for purposes of a public hearing, instead of stopping at 8:30, we're going to go to 8:35, and we'll call the last names at 8:35, so that you get that five minutes that they used up, okay? All right, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You're going to turn in your public comments.
Oh. Thank you, doctor. Okay, now, is it Ms. Schuman, is that how you pronounce it?
It is, yeah.
All right. You're on the spot there, Ms. Schuman.
Fantastic. Hello, everybody. Good evening, and thank you, thank you all for being here. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to start by saying, my name is Marla Schuman.
And spell your last name, please.
Schuman, S-H-U-M-A-N. I'm here with Chicagoland Against Fracking. I'd like to start by saying that I hope that there will be more hearings, as this is two days before Thanksgiving, and many people are out of town, and I know there are many, many people that would like to be here. So, I'd like to request that there be another hearing in Chicago, so that the people who are currently out of town this week do have an opportunity to speak on our behalf as well.
Excuse me, and we won't charge you with this minute. I also, for a lot of these people who can't be here, there is a website where you can make comments. You know that. Well, you may put your thumb down, but it's still there, at www.dnr.illinois.gov.
It's on the...
Well, it doesn't help for me to point it out. Go ahead, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yes, knowing that there is the option of the public comments, they would like to physically be here, because they would like to make their presence known. It's meaningful for them, so...
Okay.
I'd like to share that I am a holistic health practitioner, and I look at all of this from a very interconnected standpoint. So, to speak from an aspect that, in the rules, it says that the pits have to be closed. Why do we do that? We do that because if the pits are open, that can evaporate into the air, that can cause toxic rain. That rain not only rains onto people's physical bodies, but that rains onto crops that people are going to eat, so the effects are much more far-reaching than just the water source. They do seep into the food source if we do not, unless we're going to be extremely strict about the rules. We are, we all should feel at choice about clean air, clean water, clean food. I'm sure none of you want to drink water with butane, am I correct? Yeah, I see some smiles here, because that's true. If you can light, if you can light some water on fire, you know that that's not safe to drink. Nobody wants to drink fire. Nobody wants to drink gasoline. So, with that, many, many, many instances of frac wells and nearby towns have been influenced in such a way where their water is undrinkable, their showers are unshowerable. You cannot shower in frac water. So, how would you feel if you realized that your family could not drink the water from your own home that could not shower in the shower from your own home that you're providing for them, for their safety, for their protection? So, think about if that was you, how you would be affected. Put yourself in these people's shoes, who, an entire town, has no potable drinking water. That's, that's a, it feels like a luxury, but it feels, it's a necessity for life, for all of us. Nobody can live without water for more than, what, seven, eight days? It's just not possible. So, most important is the preservation of our resources. 300,000 gallons are pumped into the, pumped into the earth where there are millions of people that don't even have potable drinking water, and here we are, putting chemicals and wasting water to contaminate water. It just doesn't really make sense when we should be preserving our resources. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Schuman. Did you want to leave that up here? Did you want to leave your statement here? No, that was, oh, here. That was good. Come up here, ma'am. We're going to call two more names. Abby...
Dompall.
Dompall, D-O-M-P-L-E. If you'll stand behind Mr. Kraft, if you're here. And Brianna Tong, T-O-N-G. Brianna, if you'll stand behind Ms. Lewison and Mr. Kraft, is that right?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave Kraft, K-R-A-F-T. I'm Director of Nuclear Energy Information Service here in Chicago. We're a 32-year-old safe energy organization based here. We thank you for the opportunity to present initial comments on the proposed Illinois fracking rules. More detailed comments will be provided in writing prior to the January 3rd, 2014 deadline, which will reference specific sections of the rules that you've promulgated. But in the meantime, we do want to lay out some general observations of what we've read so far. The first is that the radiation hazard has been inadequately addressed by the rules. The absence of explicit mention and the inadequacy of the regulations offered pertaining to radioactive substances in both the enabling legislation and in IDNR's rules displays a shocking negligence on the part of the state legislature and IDNR to protect the public health and safety and the environment. The words radioactive or radioactivity are mentioned only five times in very brief passages in the 135 pages of rules promulgated by IDNR. Neither radon nor radium are mentioned by name in the entire document, even though both represent a substantial public health threat, both to the workers and residents residing near fracking storage and disposal sites. The words radioactive or radioactivity are mentioned only five times in very brief passages in the 135 pages of rules promulgated by IDNR. Neither radon nor radium are mentioned by name in the entire document, even though both represent a substantial public health threat, both to the workers and residents residing near fracking storage and disposal sites. The second general observation is that the unique qualities of radioactive materials and radiation are not adequately represented in the rules proposed. While general references are made regarding radioactive substances in the sections dealing with water quality, pollution, testing and spills, and remediation, none of these adequately appreciate nor deal with unique hazards produced by radioactive substances released during the fracking process. In general, radioactive substances are treated simply as one more checkbox, like all the others, to be dealt with. No specifics, unique to the remediation of radioactive substances in soil or water, are given. No treatment, handling, or transportation methods or requirements are given. Radiation is simply a non-issue in these rules. Some brief examples, the issue of radon gas and the effects on local air quality. This is even mentioned in Section 245.845, which deals with gas management during flowback. That section only deals with hydrocarbons. Radon is not mentioned at all. Another example, in the specific cases of the treatment of recycling of the flowback water, no mention is made as to what standards for radiation content will apply or what treatment methods would be used, even though that flowback water is reusable. So you may be contaminating workers inadvertently with that omission. A simple, obvious recommendation that we would put forward is that it's clear that a significant radiological threat exists at every aspect in the fracking operation, both to the workers on-site, to the public living near the wells, storage, and disposal sites, both in the present and in the future. The radiation contents of fracking need to be governed by the existing rules and regulations for the storage, treatment, transportation, and disposal of low-level radioactive waste. In other words, you must define those entities as radioactive waste and not as mere fracking residues. The final observation, we wrote the state legislature in January of this year warning of these hazards and fracking, and none of our warnings were either responded to nor addressed in the ensuing legislation. Yesterday, Channel 7 News reported that a company known as Adco Services, a radiation broker in Tinley Park, had been in violation over 70 times over a 20-year period, yet AIMA allowed Adco to retain its license and continue operating.
15 seconds, Mr. Kraft.
Thank you. The level, this level of nonregulation will not be tolerated in fracking. We want you to know that now. The author and journalist William Boardman said, "Betrayal is a solid rational basis for distrust." And given the rules that we have seen and the way that we have seen state agencies, which are now understaffed and under budgeted operated, we do not have the trust that these rules will protect the public health, safety, and the environment." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kraft. Let's see, Ms. Lewisson?
I'm Linda Lewisson. I'm an energy policy advisor. I serve on the National Corps Team of the Sierra Club Nuclear Free Campaign, and I'm a board member of Nuclear Energy Information Service, the 32-year-old watchdog on the nuclear industry in Illinois. I want to make more general comments because Dave made the specific comments about the effects of radiation on this, on the hydraulic fracking. This is, and many of us know that this, that hydraulic fracking is an inherently unsafe and toxic technology. In Illinois, with increased occurrence of radar and radioactivity in these unique shale formations, we see that even more. It is unsafe at any speed, it is unsafe in all of its parts, and you cannot regulate your way out of it, as we are hearing tonight. The image from Inconvenient Truth, if you remember, is the scales of justice, jobs, planet, jobs, planet, doesn't have to say anymore. We cannot use the jobs as a cover for safe water, air, and food. Which, as Jill said, we all need. Senator Markey said years ago that energy policy and the choices we make about energy policy is the central story of our time. It drives climate change, it drives so much political act of our political decision-making. We support a carbon-free, nuclear-free energy policy, no nukes, no radioactive waste, no gas, no fracking, no coal, no oil, no pet coke, no kidding. Eventually, there will be a national moratorium on fracking. Eventually, there will be a statewide moratorium on fracking. We have seen that organizations and individuals that go the regulatory route will eventually implode on this issue. To end, I want to say that we, as the public, are taxpayers and citizens as well as ratepayers, and we fund the IDNR, and we respectfully request that you take more than 2 hours and 3 minutes to hear us. If you have to stay, if you have to stay half the night, we are all prepared to do that. It is a little cost to allow us, the public, or should I say, the unwashed public to hear, to be heard, and we request more hearings, not only just before Thanksgiving, but throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ben Chmetzky, is that close? C-H-A-M-E-T-Z-K-Y, okay. I'll stand over here. Are you Ms. Tong?
Yes.
Okay. Behind one or the other? I don't care which one. Okay, there you go. Kathy, it looks like M-A-C-A-J-Y or G, Iron Student Network?
I got it, I'm here.
Okay. You'll stand behind Ms. Tong, am I right, I guess? Okay, Ms. Tong.
Sure. My name is Brianna Tong. I'm a member of the Iron Student Network, and I'm here with Fair Economy Illinois. Before I make my comment, I would like to request that the IDNR extend the comment period until after the holidays. During the holidays, a lot of people are not thinking about making these comments. We would like that period to be extended at least till the end of January. So, we know that corporations exist to make a profit, and that big banks, fossil fuel companies, and all sorts of companies have throughout history broken laws, poisoned our environment, and endangered human lives for the sake of profit. Now, we know that while fracking is hurting our communities and the people in them, it's making wealthy corporations even wealthier. But the only way to ensure that corporations are going to follow the law and protect us and our environment is to make it more expensive to break the law than it is to follow the law. And that's a problem with these rules. The rules drafted by the IDNR contain very minimal fines on corporations for very serious violations of human and environmental safety. Fines start at a token $50 per violation and only go up to $2,500 for a violation. That's in Section 245.200. I am a student at the University of Chicago. I work part-time, I make about $400 a month. When I get a ticket for violating rules in Illinois, like a parking ticket for $135, that is more than a fourth of my income. The top five producers of oil and gas made over $118 billion in profits last year, so a $50 or even a $2,500 fine is not going to stop them from fracking in Illinois. The fines in the rules are actually technically lower than the daily fines specified in the original legislation. The cost of polluting the groundwater of only, of over 800,000 Illinoisans, the cost of illness and cancer caused by contaminated water and air, and the cost of brain damage caused by toxic fumes, these should be reflected in the fines. The costs of violations of the rules need to be higher than the millions of dollars in profits that corporations stand to gain from fracking our land. Thank you.
We've gotten away from spelling last names, so would you spell your last name when you say your name, please?
My name's Abby Domke, that's D-O-M-P-K-E. I am a student at UIC, a member of the organization Roots of Justice, and part of the Iron Student Network. Before I comment on the rules, I would also like to request that the IDNR extends the public comment period for 90 days, ending on Friday, February 7. And second, that the department hold more public hearings in Chicago and Bloomington on January. There are so many people in this room that aren't going to get the chance to talk, and I think that they deserve an equal chance. So first off, a key provision of the bill passed in June requires that fracking wastewater be stored in closed tanks. The only exception to this is when companies underestimate the size of the tanks and produce more wastewater than can be contained in the tanks. In other words, as in case of emergency. And in those cases, companies would be allowed to store wastewater in dangerous open-air pits for theoretically up to seven days. There is multiple problems with this rule. First of all, the draft rules do not ensure that companies accurately calculate the appropriate size of the tank, creating a loophole for companies to chronically underestimate these tank sizes. The department could easily fix this by mandating a specific method by which companies must calculate the size of the tanks in order to minimize the frequency of overflow and thus the use of open-air pits. And as many people have said already, open-air pits are in our food, the water goes in our showers, we just, we can't, we can't have that. My second problem is in reference to Page 3, Paragraph 6 of the Regulatory Act, which states, "Publish studies or reports, sources of underlying data used to compose this rulemaking, none." With this comment, I strongly object to a set of rules that blatantly admits that its authors have chosen not to consult published studies, reports, or sources of underlying data. This is absolutely unacceptable for something that has such a large effect on public health and the environment. Before these rules are published, this comment requests that the IDNR participate in regular monitoring of government reports, peer-reviewed studies, and media reports regarding the hydraulic fracturing published by reputable sources about the effects of fracking that have taken place in other parts of the world. This is important for something that has such a large impact on the environment and lives. The issue of fracking is important to me, first off, because it's so detrimental to the environment and our health. Something this dangerous should have regulations set in place to protect us, the citizens, not the companies. In addition to this, I would like to believe that the purpose of our government is still to protect our people's health and give them a voice. Please show that your intent as government officials, who our taxes pay, our taxes pay your, like, sorry, for your salaries, please show that it's still your intent by extending the comment period and providing us with more hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. All right, we want to call two more names. Georgette Kirchendahl? Oh, if you'll stand behind Ms., this lady, whose name I can't...
It's Mahai.
Mahai, okay. And I'll let you spell that. And Joe Kaplan? Joe, you'll stand behind Ben. Ben and Joe. Okay, I think Ben's been up here longer, have you not, sir?
I am.
All right, you go right ahead and spell your last name, please.
My name is Ben Chmetzky, C-H-A-M-E-T-Z-K-Y, and I'm a member of the Southside Solidarity Network at University of Chicago, the Iron Student Network, and I'm with Fair Economy Illinois. And I came up in Carbondale, Illinois, down in southern Illinois. And the thing is that during the holiday season, I'm not going to be there, I'm going to be out of state with other family, and I'm not going to be able to participate in a town hall in my own community because you guys have scheduled these hearings during a period when lots of people are traveling. So I'd really like to be able to, you know, get together with the people I grew up with and express these thoughts. And yeah, one of the things I grew up with is that everyone down in southern Illinois knows we're on this massive New Madrid Fault Line, but there is no preparation for it. We don't have the political clout that people in Chicago do, so there's not adequate funding for disaster relief, there's no, I don't think, any large-scale preparedness plan. So, these companies are going to be fracking, and it's known that this can cause seismic disturbances, might set off something that everyone down there has been dreading. You know, we've got brick buildings, we don't have advanced Japanese technology to protect ourselves from earthquake damage, so it's up to the regulatory authorities to make sure that these corporations trying to scrape the last bit of profit out of our natural resources don't, you know, destroy everything I grew up with. Another thing about the way we live down there is that a lot of the people are not in home-rural municipalities, they're out in unincorporated townships and counties, and the regulations, as you guys publish them, don't give any authority to non-home-rural municipalities to regulate fracking within their boundaries. So if you live in Jackson County, out where, anywhere in Union County, any, most of the counties there have like one home-rural municipality at most. So if you live out in the place where a lot of the people live, if you're, if you live that way, you have no political say in what's done with your resources. And a lot of the people there are living off those resources. People there still have animals in their yard, they drink from wells, that's what it's like down there, and it's, you know, the entire political say in what happens to their lives is being taken away from them. So, I hope you listen and come up with some better regulations.
All right, thank you. And do you want to... Okay, ma'am, and if you'd spell your last name, please.
Yeah, my name is Kathy Mahai, M-A-C-H-A-J.
J.
All right. I am here with Iron Student Network and here with Fair Economy Illinois. Before I begin, I would like to ask for more public hearings here in Chicago closer to January and in Bloomington. When my parents migrated here from Europe, they were taught an important life lesson that they then passed down to my brother and I. They taught us that nature never takes more than it needs, but fracking does. I ask specifically that IDNR revise its rules to provide stricter regulations on wastewater leakage. As spoken before, the rules drafted contain a loophole that allows for open pits that store highly toxic carcinogenic wastewater. This wastewater can easily leak into groundwater, which in turn contaminates drinking water that we drink. This wastewater can generate fumes that harm us, animals, and ecosystems. Putting fragile ecosystems under that kind of stress can cause entire populations to become extinct. I again ask IDNR to modify these rules on open pits because this is a matter of letting entire cultures fade. Whether everyone wants to admit it or not, we all speak the language of nature. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we're going to pick two more names.
Asia?
Asia? Last is N-E-M-E-R?
Aja, it's Aja.
Aja, Aja, okay. Aja. And Michelle, M-E-J-I-A. Okay, all right. Okay, who's been up here the longest here? Okay, Joe Kaplan, K-A-P-L-A-N?
Yeah, my name is Joe Kaplan. I'm a student at the University of Chicago. I'm here with a group called Students for Health Equity, and I'm also here with the Iron Student Network and Fair Economy Illinois. I actually grew up in Texas, and I'm sure all six of you are aware, fracking has been around in Texas for a long time, and there are thousands of wells in Texas, but there are very few wells that ever get shut down. And I was not alive when the rules that dictated fracking were made where I'm from, but had I been alive, I would have spoken out and said something like, "We are all here to do now," to make these rules strict, because oil companies are not interested, or oil companies will drill with strict rules, but strict rules help people who would suffer if these oil companies break the rules. So I want to say while the original regulatory bill requires that the construction and testing of fracking wells meet standards set by the American Petroleum Institute, these rules create absolutely no incentive for companies to meet these standards. Without following these standards, all fracking wells will be in danger of blowouts, fires, and explosions that endanger the lives of workers and nearby residents. So the solution to this is to suspend and revoke permits automatically when companies violate these standards. This way, companies will think twice before they decide to violate any of these regulatory I also would like to suggest that you extend the hearing period and have more of these public hearings. We are here to help you make these rules better, and there are lots and lots of people who have lots of positive input, who care very deeply about these rules.
My last name is spelled K-I-R, K-E-N-D-A-L-L. I am a member of the International Socialist Organization. And I'd like to start by saying that as an Illinois resident, I demand that IDNR extends the comment period past the holidays. I demand that there are more hearings about this company, which will irreparably damage our lives and our ecosystem. This is a travesty. I can't help but notice that approximately half of you on the panel have bottled water. It serves as a symbol today that people like you, people with more means, can just go buy water while you damage ours. People like me, people like everyone in this room cannot afford an alternative when you pollute our drinking water. This not only is fracking in Illinois an environmental issue, it is a human rights issue. We as human beings have the right to not be abused by companies that are looking for profit. We have the right to drink water that is not full of radioactive waste. We have the right to not have companies come in and do a procedure that can cause earthquakes. We have the right for our lawmakers to not say it's all right for fracking companies to cause four earthquakes before they have to shut down, as long as they're under 5.0 magnitude. I mean, what is wrong with all of you? Shame on you. Shame on you.
Okay, we want to pick a couple more names. Kaylee Horn? Kaylee Horn, H-R-N-E? There she is. And Isaac Silver. Okay, let's see, who's up here first? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Aija Nemir-Onerud, that's A-I-J-A, last name N-E-M-E-R-a-a-n-e-r-u-d. And I'm a member of the Iron Student Network, and I'm also here with Fair Economy Illinois. And before I make my comment, like many people up here, I would like to request that the IDNR provide more hearings, particularly in Chicago, for those folks who weren't able to be here tonight. And also, as you can see from the room, we have a lot of people who aren't going to be able to make comments. And I'd also like to request that the IDNR extend the public comment period to 90 days, ending in February. The opportunities for public comment currently available are insufficient, as demonstrated by the number of people who are in this room testify, and the fact that it's two days before Thanksgiving. I believe more hearings must be added. And I believe more hearings must be added to make this a truly transparent and democratic process. So I think that there are a lot of problems with this, with these regulations. But I'd like to speak about the issues around health professionals' access to information about the chemicals that are being used, as a lot of people have tonight. There are tremendous health and safety risks associated with pumping tons of highly toxic and radioactive water deep into our bedrock. But the chemicals used are kept secret, so not even doctors and healthcare professionals know what toxins have been involved when they're trying to treat a patient. So like, as people have laid out in their testimony otherwise tonight, just the availability of that information, that it's not available 24 hours, seven days a week, that healthcare professionals are going to have to track it down, sometimes in the middle of the night, is insufficient. So for this reason, IDNR rules impede the ability of affected patients to come in contact, who come in contact with highly toxic fracking pollutants, pollutants to acquire immediate treatment. That's section 245.730. This issue particularly troubles me because I can clearly imagine what it'll be like for those residents who would be affected by this. When I was young, my mom was diagnosed with cancer, and as a child, my life was dominated by the pain that she and the rest of my, the rest of my family were going through as a result of that. Like, doctor's visits we couldn't afford, hair loss, nausea, and then eventually, when I was six, she passed away. And I don't want to see like one more extra person have to go through that. It's awful. And I think that IDNR must enact stricter regulations that will actually protect Illinois residents, because ones that we have right now aren't going to do that. So with that, I'd also ask that you extend the public comment period again, so we can see all these real repercussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okay, yeah, all right. Ms. Meja?
Mejia.
Okay, would you spell that?
Yeah, sure. My name's Michelle Mejia, that's M-E-J-I-A. I'm a member of the Iron Student Network, and I'm here with Fair Economy Illinois. Before I make my comment, I'd also like to request that IDNR extend the public comment period and hold more hearings, particularly here in Chicago and in Bloomington. So yeah, I've grown up in a time where I've seen corporations wage war on working people and the environment. These regulations are full of loopholes, and I don't believe they're there by accident. I have some specifics. The original regulatory bill, section 170, requires that the construction and testing of fracking wells meet the standards set by the American Petroleum Institute, and the rules create absolutely no incentive for companies to meet these standards, section 245, period 1100. As of now, it only states that IDNR may suspend or revoke permits and/or issue penalties in the event that these standards are not met. Without following these standards, all fracking wells will be in grave danger of blowouts, fires, and explosions that endanger the lives of workers and nearby residents. The solution to this is to suspend or revoke permits automatically when companies violate these standards by changing the saying that IDNR will, will suspend or revoke permits or issue penalties. This way, companies will know to think twice without, will think twice about violating these provisions. Also, the rules as written also place an impossible burden on IDNR to prove that fracking operations are a significant threat to public health, wildlife, and the environment before it can suspend permits. Why is IDNR intentionally hindering its own ability to hold fracking operators accountable for reckless actions? Worse, companies can also completely nullify IDNR suspensions by submitting materially untrue information, claiming that its well operation constitutes no significant threat to public health, environment, et cetera. IDNR is in effect allowing fracking operators to regulate themselves. So I believe these rules completely undermine the spirit of the regulatory bill, and I hope that you take a second look. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to leave that here?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. We're going to call Julian Borjas, or B-O-R-J-A-S, I believe. Julian? And Randy J-U-R-A-S. Either of those people here? Randy? Okay, what about Julian? Going once? Going twice? Gone. All right, Zach? F-A-B-O-S, is it? Zach? There he is, okay. All right, which of you two is the longest up here?
You can do it.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Horn, Horn, H-O-R-N-E. I'm here as a part of a group called Students for Health Equity and Iron Student Network, and also Fair Economy Illinois. I'm here as a University of Chicago student, and as a college student, I am pretty busy, and I understand that 11 days is not enough time to go through an 135-page document on these rules that were designed for the people. And as the people, I think we need more time to be able to go through this document and have more space that we can voice our opinion. So I call for another public hearing after the holidays.
Thank you.
So although I didn't make it through the 135-page document, I did get to page three, where the rules say that there are no public study, published studies, reports, or sources of underlying data that were used or consulted in the process of this rulemaking. This is unacceptable, and I think that this is echoed in other places in the document. For example, in section 245.200, the rules state that they require fracking companies to disclose all findings of serious violation under federal, state, and other laws when applying for fracking permit. But at the same time, it provides no definition of what constitute a quote-unquote "serious violation." This is akin to having no disclosure requirement at all, because companies can easily say that they did not consider a violation to be serious enough for reporting. This, to me, is an example of the ineffective nature of this, of these rules, and an indication that not enough thought was put into them and not enough public input was given. The solution for this would be to remove the word "serious" and ask for these corporations to disclose any and all violations and fines alleged by, alleged by public authorities. It's clear from what we've heard from tonight that these rules are inadequate, ineffective, and out of touch with the realities faced by Illinois citizens, and I ask that they would be revised. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Silver?
Yeah, hi, my name is Isaac Silver, I-S-A-A-C-S-I-L-V-E-R. First thing I want to say, so it gets on the record, is thanks for the hard work of the note taker, I do a lot of that kind of stuff, and it, I mean, it's amazing to keep up with everything people are saying. And get that on the historical record. So we've heard from people who have environmental and scientific and workplace safety expertise and, you know, looking at all of the details of the things that are wrong about the proposed legislation. And I just want to sort of step back beyond the details and say, this is about a process which, when I first heard about it, it's been going on for decades, but when I heard about it, I thought it was like a plot from the 90s cartoon series Captain Planet, like blasting water into the earth to explode rocks and then pump poisonous chemicals and oils, and gas, and other toxic substances to sit in pits and harm the land, the water, and the people who are doing the work, and the people who have to live around that. It is totally ridiculous. Is there anybody here who's, who's come to speak in favor of this? I mean, is this really a, something that we can say we're going down the right path as a society, rather than going down a path where, where everything will be put on the, on the altar to be sacrificed for profit, where there's no end to this stuff? Do we really want to blow up things underground in order to suck out the very last bits of fossil fuels until there's none left, and then we're totally screwed? I, I think it's totally ridiculous, and it puts us on the wrong path. So I'm, I'm for as many hearings as there can be, I'm for prolonging the process as far as it can go, and I reject the framework that we're, the train has left the station. As long as there's people in this, who live here... As long as there's people who live here and live anywhere where this is proposed, who have any kind of moral, human, and environmental conscience, there will be opposition to fracking, whether it's through public comment at events like this, or any other things that people deem necessary. So the train hasn't left the station, we're here, we all oppose it. I didn't see if anybody raised your hands in favor of fracking, I'm sorry. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
All right, we've got Christina Martinez. Christina? And Joy Hallawicki? Okay. Let's see where Christine's going there. Okay, Mr. Juris, is it?
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name is Randy Juris, J-U-R-A-S. As a resident of Homagland, Illinois, I currently do use well water. I am also a member of the Homagland Environmental Committee, and we have been following fracking issues in Illinois. While we do not feel that fracking will come to Will County, there are real concerns about how fracking will affect the radium levels in our wells. I would like to point out that the city of Waukesha, Wisconsin, currently is having problems with radium levels beyond the EPA limits, but only in their deep wells. The water for these deep wells originated west of the subcontinental divide. The water seeped underground below the impermeable shale layer and then into the deep aquifer. While there currently is no mention of the fracking process being responsible for this radium, there is also nothing to say that radium is not, fracking is not responsible. More to the point, why are we here today with high-volume hydraulic fracking that is now being proposed eventually cause deep-water wells to become contaminated? In researching the history of fracking in Illinois, you will find that fracking was probably done in some form or another 60 years ago, but in only very small numbers, and then no environmental follow-up work was ever done. From what I can see, the oil and gas industry has been wildcatting it up until now. House Bill 2615 and Senate Bill 1715 did not have universal approval, not at all. There were and still are a large number of people who oppose fracking, some because it just doesn't seem right to pour 70,000 gallons of toxic chemicals into a deep hole and then pump hundreds of thousands of gallons of water under high pressure on top of that. If nothing else, the wastewater blown back from the fracking process is highly toxic. Simply dumping that wastewater back into the lakes, rivers, or even holding ponds is extremely risky. As we have seen with fly ash retention ponds at coal-fired plants, they leak. Then you have the toxic chemicals poured down the deep well. We are being told that it is only enough that we know what these chemicals are, not which ones should not be used, and in what amounts. It appears that no one is ever going to investigate what chemicals will have detrimental effects on the environment. As far as I can see, there honestly is no way to tell in advance of applying pressure to the toxic mix exactly what the fracturing of the rock structure will occur. It does not seem to be an exact science yet. The possibility of the fracture that is created being bigger than expected is a real risk. What are the possibilities of the fracking causing seismic activity? The whole idea of fracking is to move things around deep underground, to use high pressure with toxic chemicals to force a crack to happen, and then inject a sand mix into that crack to keep the crack open. What are the assurances that radium will not also follow these cracks? We know that there is a good chance the wastewater will have radium. Where, where else will that radium flow go? Nowhere in the proposed rules do I see any further research being done with regards to any of these questions. There is vague talk about minimum testing, but nothing about follow-up work to make sure deep aquifers are protected, or to determine how fracking causes seismic activity. There also seems to be no standard on how to regulate how wastewater will ultimately be treated. Holding all wastewater in a tank is a good idea, but what happens next to that wastewater? There is no way that toxic brew should be simply dumped anywhere. It needs to be handled in the same fashion that any hazardous waste product should be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I know your first name's Zach.
My name's Zach Fabus, and it's F-A-B-O-S. And I'd just like to ask two things of you. First, I'd like to ask an extension of the hearings, and I would also like all of you to put yourself, or put yourselves into the shoes of those living in southern Illinois, because if these regulations aren't changed, their lives will be ruined, and they'll have nowhere else to go. And I think it's wrong that their lives are at risk, just so people can make some money. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, Carol Kurz, looks like K-U-R-Z. Ms. Kurz? Okay, is she here? Okay. And Glenda Reed, R-E-E-D. Did Ms. Kurz show up?
Yes, she's here.
Okay. All right, who was up here first? Okay, Ms. Hallawicki?
My name is Christina Martinez.
Oh.
My last name is M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z, and I live in McKinley Park, which is near...
Holding all wastewater in a tank is a good idea, but what happens next to that wastewater? There is no way that toxic brew should be simply dumped anywhere. It needs to be handled in the same fashion that any hazardous waste product should be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I know your first name's Zach.
My name's Zach Fabos, and it's F-A-B-O-S. And I'd just like to ask two things of you. First, I'd like to ask an extension of the hearings, and I would also like all of you to put yourselves into the shoes of those living in southern Illinois, because if these regulations aren't changed, their lives will be ruined, and they'll have nowhere else to go. And I think it's wrong that their lives are at risk, just so people can make some money. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, Carol Kurz, looks like K-U-R-Z. Ms. Kurz? Okay, is she here? Okay. And Glenda Reed, R-E-E-D. Did Ms. Kurz show up?
Yes.
Okay. All right, who was up here first? Okay, Ms. Hallowicki?
My name is Christina Martinez. My last name is M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z, and I live in McKinley Park, which is near Bridgeport and Brighton Park, and I represent the McKinley Park Community Garden. And my comment relates to the, well, first, before I make my comment, I would like to say that we need to have more of these hearings. And I know in the Latino community, when I talk about fracking, they have no clue. There's lots of people who do not have a clue. The media is not talking about it, and the Spanish stations on the radio, no one's talking about this issue. So we need, like, if this is affecting our food, our water, you know, our health, then we need to have a statewide education campaign to educate the public about fracking, and about the dangers of fracking, and Spanish, and Chinese, and Cantonese, whatever language. Everybody needs to learn about this fracking, because it's affecting people's lives. So my comment relates to the administrative rule regarding wastewater storage. My understanding, after viewing Josh Fox's film Gasland, is that this wastewater contains over 360 toxic carcinogenic and radioactive chemicals. According to the rules drafted by the IDNR, these natural gas companies will be allowed to store this wastewater in open air containment pits rather than closed tanks as mandated by the regulatory bill. As Josh Fox's film shows, this chemical-laden wastewater does leak into the ground and contaminates drinking water. Here in our state of Illinois, the water safety and quality of 800,000 citizens may be compromised as a result of the fracking process. As a registered and licensed dietitian, I stress to my clients the importance of drinking at least eight to 10 glasses of filtered water daily. If we don't have clean water to drink, people can get sick, develop cancer, become dehydrated, and eventually die with long-term consumption of contaminated water. I am concerned for the health and well-being of my fellow citizens downstate. This is where fracking is supposedly going to take place. I have no faith in these companies following the rules. To them, it's all about money and not about the health and well-being of the people in those communities. There is no safe way to frac, and Illinois needs to be, we need to have a moratorium on fracking, just like Governor Cuomo has in New York State. And I wish Governor Cuomo should propose a moratorium on fracking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Now she showed up. Okay, I think it's now, Ms. Hallowicki, correct?
Yeah, my name is Joy Hallowicki, and you spell my last name, H-O-L-O-W-I-C-K-I. And I'm with Rising Tide Chicago. And, yeah, go on the website. And so, just hearing that a $2,000 fine for a loss of a life, is that, am I hearing that correctly? That's pretty sick. Like, you make me sick. I also happen to work at Argonne National Laboratory, and I've lived in Illinois my entire life. And even though I've lived in Illinois my entire life, what's not mutually exclusive from that part of me is that I am concerned about climate change, and most specifically how methane gas affects the atmosphere, and how we are informing citizens about this effect, and what its relation is to fracking. Recently, the New York Times announced another study that showed that estimates of methane release were grossly underestimated. And so what I would like to know is, not only are these affecting human beings, how will they affect the other human beings around the world? In addition to that, I want to know what the best standard practices for fracking will be, and what the industry is doing to help standardize that. Now, we have this permit system, and so what I'm imagining are these mom-and-pop companies coming along and performing their, this highly intensive process. What's being done to standardize practices? This is a major concern of the EPA, which in 2012 issued out green standard practices and set that as a goal. What are we, as Illinois, doing to help promote that issue? We're probably doing nothing, since we can't even put the correct location of where the meeting is on their website. I'm mad. I'm mad, and so are the citizens of Illinois. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to call two more names. Ma'am, why don't you move up a little bit and get somebody behind you. Tina Briggs. Tina Briggs. Tina Briggs. William McFadden. William McFadden. Well, if you're here, let us know. All right. Let you read that one.
Mansi Kathuria.
Mansi, M-A-N-S-I, it looks like. Okay, whatever. Elias Friedman. Are you here? Okay. All right, I think Ms. Kurz.
Yes, that's right. It's Carol, C-A-R-O-L, and last name is K-U-R-Z. K-U-R-Z. And I'm a member of NEIS and Freckery Illinois and Sierra Club. Most of the comments that I have wanted to make have been kind of spoken about already. I did want to make a comment about CO2 emissions, because we're fast becoming, all the methane and gases really hurting the rest of our lives. I have two grandchildren, one seven, one two. My growing children, I'm not too concerned about, but I'm concerned about my grandchildren, that we don't have global warming, and all this fracking adds to that. And that really, really, really is concern. I was raised, I'm 75 years old, when I was a little girl growing up, we were told that we make this place better than how we, we leave this place, and we make it better than how we came. And we're just not doing that anymore. We've got to get to the point where, we all need money, we all love comfort, but we've got to get to the point where we care about each other, because we're all in this together, and nobody is going to survive unless you think you're going to go on some trip to Mars or someplace and get away from this planet. This planet is not going to exist in another 100 years, the way we are going. It might even be less than that. So please, 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 I wish you would stop fracking, but if you cannot make it as safe as you possibly can, because this is really going nowhere, and it is killing us all. That's all I have to say. Thank you, ma'am.
If those of you who speak want to leave your written statements with us, please do so. Let's see, Ms. Reed, is that right?
Yes, my name is Glenda Reed, R-E-E-D. I'm here with the organization Food and Water Watch. The Hydraulic Fracturing Regulatory Act was passed by the Illinois Legislature and signed into law after closed-door negotiations between lawmakers, industry, and several environmental groups. At the time, many of us warned that the oil and gas industry's well-paid lobbyists would succeed in watering down the resulting regulations, and that these watered-down regulations would be inadequately enforced. Our underground sources of drinking water are vital. It only takes one case of contamination to ruin a community's source of water. Oil and natural gas are not worth the risk of ruining our drinking water. I would like to address sections 245.210 at A6 and A7, and 245.815, that's 245.815 at B, as well as 245.101. The rules proposed by the IDNR ignore what we are learning about fracking disasters across the country, and in doing so exacerbate the risks to the health of our water. So these sections are grossly inadequate in terms of protecting against so-called frac hits. Frac hits occur when new fractures from fracking intersect with aging and abandoned wells. According to these sections, permitted operators would only have to worry about frac hits on existing wells that are within 750 feet of the proposed well, measured at the minimum distance between any two points along two retrospective boreholes. Even then, they only need to consider those existing wells if they were drilled within 400 feet of the rock formation targeted by the new well. I would like to clearly say that this law ignores reality. Just this past September, in New Mexico, fracking at one well blew fluids out of a neighboring wellhead located half a mile away. That's 2,640 feet away. That's three times, three times the distance required by the IDNR's rule. That's three times inadequate. New oil and gas wells with cement and casing failures, aging or abandoned wells with their own leaky casings, new fractures from fracking, and existing natural fractures, and faults all combine to create a network of underground pathways through which contaminants can flow. Simply put, the oil and gas industry cannot reliably predict the length of fractures they are creating, until they've created them. And these new rules all but guarantee that these fractures from fracking will connect with existing pathways of contamination. There are many other problems that the proposed regulations only begin to address. At Food and Water Watch, we believe that these problems are best avoided altogether with an outright ban on fracking. In lieu of an outright ban, we ask that the IDNR extend the review period for two years to allow for adequate research. Thank you.
All right, we're going to call Sasha Mitrofrenko. Sasha?
Yes.
Okay. And Jessica Fujan, F-U-J-A-N. Jessica, you here?
Yes.
Did she say yes?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Friedman, I think you're up.
Hello, my name is Elias Friedman, E-L-I-A-S-F-R-I-E-D-M-A-N. I'm here with the Iron Student Network, Chicagoland Against Fracking, and also here with Fair Economy Illinois. As others have pointed out, the IDNR has admitted that no studies, reports, or underlying data were used or consulted in the process of this rulemaking. I'd like to thank the IDNR for being honest about that, but also note that it's very clear, even without that disclaimer. In section 245.600B1, the proposed rules for monitoring and testing water sources only are in effect within 1,500 feet of the well site, and do not provide for testing along the horizontal leg of the well bore. This is high-pressure horizontal fracking. Horizontal is a key word there. This type of fracking, this type of mining, affects a wide area, far beyond that 1,500 feet. Additionally, the entire system of regulation, which we have been critiquing this whole long period we've had so far, and will continue to, is about high-volume, high-volume horizontal fracking. That only involves wells with more than 300,000 gallons of water. A number of smaller wells would not be covered. I think this is a drastic oversight, as well as the variety of other problems that other people have brought up, and I would like this to be noted and closed, this loophole, by the IDNR if fracking must go through in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Your turn.
My name is Mansi Kathuria. My last name is spelled K-A-T-H-U-R-I-A. I'm here today with the Iron Student Network and also with Fair Economy Illinois. I would also like to start my testimony by requesting that the IDNR extend the public hearing and comment period until well after the holidays, until February 7th, giving us just over 90 days. It is apparent to me that this hearing was deliberately scheduled two days before Thanksgiving to mitigate the number of people that could be here to testify. I personally know at least 30 people that wanted to be here that could not, and another handful that are still outside the room that haven't even been let in. We need more hearings in Chicago, as well as other places around the state, especially in Bloomington. I also want to mention the lack of studies, reports, or underlying data used in making these rules. I'm appalled that not a single peer-reviewed journal or report was consulted in the drafting of these rules. I've written high school papers that required more sources than that. I also want to speak to the fines on administering and operating violations. Like people before me have mentioned, I know that corporations do not care about people as long as they're able to make a profit off of us and off of our environment. I can't believe that fines for violating these rules go from $50,000 to $2,500 in the state. I've paid parking tickets that are more than $50. And that's what I make just about $1,000 a month to survive off of. These corporations that are making billions of dollars in profits by exploiting the people and environment of our state need to be held accountable to their actions, and I demand that this rule be amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okay, Brian Larson? And Jason Duba? Jason, you here?
Say your last name again?
No Duba? As in Tuba, I guess? Duba? Okay. Irina Merkovich?
Merkovich.
Merkovich, is that an H? Doctor, I guess, right. Okay. Let's see, who was up here first? You go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sasha Mitrofrenko, M-I-T-R-O-F-A-N-E-N-K-O. I'm here with Rise from Roswell University and Iron Student Network. Yeah. And also, I'm here with Fair Economy Illinois. And before I make my comment, I also would like to request that the IDNR extends the comment period until after the holidays, and provides more hearings, particularly in Bloomington and in Chicago. The only Chicago hearing, as we all know, is today, today's before Thanksgiving, and I was not the only one who sacrificed spending time with the family during this wonderful week to come here and speak with you, and thanks for that. Yeah, my sister works in UN, and she works in the Department of Environmental Science, so I was well aware about the dangers of fracking when I was growing up. I was also well aware that there is more than a billion of people on this planet who don't have access to clean water. And being privileged to have access to green water and using it for killing other people, that's pretty interesting. That's not how it's supposed to be. And also, I mean, water's a great thing, as we all know, and water keeps us alive. And IDNR, along with all other problems, have a lot of problems with water quality monitoring. And high-volume horizontal fracturing means that well bores can oftentimes extend for up to two miles from the actual well site. And unfortunately, section 245.600B1 of the proposed rules only provides for the testing and monitoring of water sources within 1,500 feet of the well site, and do not provide for testing along the horizontal leg of the well bore. This is a reckless disregard of the known risk of the underground migration of toxic fluids from a horizontal well bore, especially when hydraulic fracturing involves the use of explosive charges, and especially in areas known for the risk of higher of explosive charges, and especially in areas known for the risk of higher magnitude earthquakes. The US Government Accountability Office have themselves acknowledged that one major risk from fracking is the underground migration of gases and chemicals, which can lead to contamination of surface water and groundwater. Given that toxic chemicals are present along not only the vertical portion of fracking wells, but also the horizontal, water testing and monitoring must be required along the full length of any horizontal well bores in order to mitigate these risks. Furthermore, although law mandates that fracking companies have the burden of proof to demonstrate that water pollution within testing areas are not caused by fracking, IDNR's draft rules severely limits this burden of proof to my smaller list of 100 chemicals included in the law. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a student, and, I mean, it might be selfish of me, but I actually care about the future of myself and the future of my children and friends and family. And, you know, I have a lot of dreams, and I want all of those dreams to come true. And I don't want to get cancer around 30, or even sooner with how soon the fracking begins. So please, do something about it. At least do something about with the rules, because it's obvious that a lot of things are messed up about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jessica Fujan, F as in Frank, U-J-A-N. I am representing Food and Water Watch. I'm the Illinois organizer. I wanted to talk about Section 245.210A6A. It's worth looking at closely. It states that to acquire permits to conduct high-volume hydraulic fracturing in Illinois, applicants will have to submit, among other things, quote, "a description of the confining zone and the formations constituting or contributing to that zone, including but not limited to a description of the lithology, extent, thickness, permeability, porosity, transmittive faults, fractures, water or water source content, and susceptibility to vertical propagation of fractures of confining formations if known after reasonable inquiry." I'm going to repeat the last part, "if known after reasonable inquiry." What does that mean? The fact of the matter is, very little is known about the connectivity of contamination pathways below ground. About the only thing we do know is that widespread drilling and fracking will expand those pathways, creating new routes for contamination that we may not see for decades. Widespread fracking in Illinois is set to target the New Albany shale. This will mar landscapes, fragment forests across the state. It will crowd rural roads with heavy-duty trucks carrying water, chemicals, toxic waste, leading to inevitable accidents and spills. It will leave a costly legacy of local air and water pollution for communities to cope with long after the industry has left town, along with the jobs it will supposedly create. The proposed rules make all of these outcomes inevitable. As for the massive volumes of toxic waste generated by drilling and fracking, there are no good options for disposing of it insofar as I'm concerned. Injecting it back underground is the industry's favorite option, and the proposed rules anticipate this. But regardless of these rules, the risk that Illinois will be struck by damaging earthquakes will increase as a consequence of such disposal. We simply cannot afford to allow widespread drilling and fracking in Illinois. Now, with new rules proposed under the Contentious Hydraulic Fracturing Regulatory Act, the IDNR has set parameters for widespread fracking and drilling for oil and natural gas in our state. As a consequence, the coming oil and gas industry frenzy for profits will enroll Illinoisans, many of whom will be enrolled against their will, some of whom are here today, in a large, uncontrolled, public health experiment that puts their lives, their water, their families, and their future at risk. This is completely unacceptable. I work in a national organization that fights fracking in a number of states, in a number of highly-fracked states such as Colorado and Pennsylvania. What we've seen is that in Pennsylvania, they drew up regulations, ones that were supposedly strong. The rules that we're looking at today do not match rules that are currently enacted in other states that are already failing and endangering the lives of individuals, their families, their farms, and even their livestock. At Food and Water Watch, we agree with some of the banner holders in the back that say regulating fracking is an impossibility, that these companies will violate the laws that we're trying to set here today, and we also doubt that the IDNR will have the capacity to enforce the rules even to the low standards that we're observing today. We believe that a ban on fracking is necessary to protect the future of the people in the room. However, we understand that the point of these hearings is that we'll talk about the specific content of the rules, so I look forward to seeing you at every hearing that you have coming up in the future. And we do encourage that you extend the comment period of these hearings and for comments for a 103-page document that we have been given 11 days to analyze. Even our research team couldn't come up with a comprehensive response to all of the inadequacies that we've been given. So we look forward to hopefully discussing the rules that we've got before us for at least 90 days and talking to you for the rest of the holiday season.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew PYTUK, it looks like. Andrew? Is Andrew here?
Andrew.
And Reverend Dr. Terry Gallagher, good Irish name. Where is he? Okay. All right, Mr. Larson, I think it's your turn.
Thank you. My name is Brian Larson, B-R-I-A-N-L-A-R-S-O-N, resident of Chicago, Illinois, member of the Sierra Club, and an environmental attorney. I would like to thank the board here for coming and receiving our public comment, as well as for the very passionate comments I've heard tonight. I am coming to echo some of those comments and also encouraging further deliberation and receipt of further input. My two main comments pertain to certain sections of the proposed rules. And in particular, I would like to say that there are significant holes in how the rules came out as opposed to what the original law was signed into as. But my two main concerns are with Section 245.600B1, specifically that the measurements of any sort of well sites only take place within 1,500 feet of the wellhead. As many of you already know, these sorts of horizontal drilling practices can extend out to 5,000 to 10,000 feet away from the original site. My grandfather always said that you can't manage something without measuring it. To disregard the length of the well bores and how far they will extend is a drastic oversight that I think needs to be remedied. Additionally, the other concern I see is the fines and their lack of any sort of stopping power towards anyone possibly interested in violating the law. When somebody can, for just disregarding a client's request to go to the Bears game for the day instead, commit just a simple fine of $50, in comparison to other states and to issues and to legislation like the Clean Water Act, our fines are significantly out of line with any sort of other states and the federal oversight. The Clean Water Act, the Safe Drinking Water Act perhaps would be one thing to look towards, and I think some other states have gotten the minimum fines correct in terms of their restrictions and desire to hold back any sort of, to discourage any sorts of violations. Michigan starts at $400. That we're merely an eighth of that is absolute travesty. Fines per day for, under the Clean Water Act, go up to $50,000 a day. Ours cap that out at $2,500. The Safe Drinking Water Act goes up to $5,000. Where's the similar requirements under these rules? And for that, I would request that you consider higher fines to discourage any sorts of violations, as well as adequate oversight of the entirety of the hydraulic fracturing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Let's see, doctor?
Dr. Irina Merkovich, licensed clinical psychologist.
I just spelled your last name.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's M-E-R-K-O-V-I-C-H, Merkovich. Former resident of Chicago, current resident of Southern Illinois. I just want to bring up a couple of issues that people in this room might not be aware of. In Southern Illinois, there are basically two leading industries, which are farming and oil business. And oil companies provide people who live in Southern Illinois with jobs, with health insurance, with any hope for the future. And, you know, I'm going to speak as a mental health professional, because the population downstate is severely underserved. The funding for mental health has been cut several times throughout Illinois, including Chicago. And especially, it affected, you know, downstate. And if we, I think, if there's strict regulations going to be imposed on oil business, I think many businesses will be just closed and move out of the state of Illinois. They will go to other states where they will, you know, such as Indiana, for instance, where they will be able to work freely. And these people, my clients and my potential clients, will be left without jobs, without health insurance, without hopes. So what we're going to see, I think that suicidal rates are going to skyrocket. Substance abuse, which is a huge issue, alcohol and drug abuse, will go up tremendously because people will be left with nothing. I mean, not every one of them will be able to just pick up the stuff, the kids, the families, and leave Illinois. And why would they want to do that? So just for those of you who advocate for all these, you know, strict regulations, and, you know, I do not know much particularly about hydrofracking. That's not my area of expertise, so I'm not going to go there. But I think for those of you who just demand stricter and stricter regulations being imposed, just think of these people, of their well-being, of their interests. These people, these people who will be left behind due to those draconian legislations. This is the, do you have time? This is my point. How much time do you have?
We have about one minute remaining.
One minute. Okay. Another thing that, you know, I was just, while I was listening to all these things in this room, you know, I'm originally from Moscow. I was born and raised in the Soviet Union. And this environment reminds me very much of the environment of the Soviet Union, which means, I'm absolutely serious, which means a lack of democracy, a lack of diverse opinions in this room, because, you know, I mean, I was following this discussion very, very seriously, very thoroughly. And what I've noticed that this public opinion, at least in this room, is very skewed. And, you know, I'm not sure that it represents the principle of democracy, because, you know, I personally, I moved to this country to find some freedom and democratic principles. And I'm not seeing them, particularly in the state of Illinois, I'm not seeing these principles, you know, being put in existence.
Okay. Thank you, doctor.
So, you know, and besides, one more thing, I was, you know, I'm not sure why this, yeah, for those people who were saying, you know, corporations, they're making profits, you know, for these small oil companies, you people do not have any idea how much it...
That's it, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, James, is that Warren? James Warren, is that what it is? Of, I can't read the address either. It's on Wabash Avenue, lives on Wabash. Okay, too late. Mark, is that Mike? I can't even read Mike, let alone the last name. D-U-R-S-C-H-M-I-D. Okay. Kevin Castro, Castro I guess it is. Kevin?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Reverend, you're up, I think.
Good evening. For the record, I'm the Reverend Dr. Terrence Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R. I reside in Aurora, Illinois, and I'm here as part of my ministry as a public theologian. But I'm also going to speak from my knowledge and experience base as an engineer and a manufacturing executive in the chemical industry for over 30 years. So I'm going to bring both to the table tonight. It's kind of an odd combination. As a person of faith, I'm strongly in favor and supportive of regulations that effectively protect the climate, that protect the people who are now living, and for the generations yet to come. And when I review these rules, they are not to that level yet. And I want to address specifically one, given the time limit that I have. But I want to preface it with, you know, I was in the chemical manufacturing business at the time that all the regulations hit, in the '70s, in the '80s, and the '90s. And each time a new regulation hit, we would scream, and we would moan, and we would say, "You're driving us out of business." In fact, I would probably 40 years ago have been one of those lobbyists that met with you guys behind closed doors to say, "These rules are too hard for us to put up with." But, you know, we found a way to do it. We found a way to meet best available control technology. We found a way to meet maximum achievable control technology. And along the way, we not only became better neighbors, we became better technologists. We became better at the business of what we were doing. So when I was reading the regulations, and I came to the concept of open-air hazardous waste pits, I was shocked. That is not something that we would consider in 2013 in the chemical manufacturing business. So why in the world would you allow the most wealthy corporations to get away with something that you won't allow the rest of the industry to get away with? And then, when I looked at the rules, and I find that you took this concept of open-air hazardous waste storage and loosened the rules further to limit, take away the restrictions on how and when it can happen, and how long it can exist. You know, that's 1800s technology. That's not today. It's like going to a doctor with a fever, and the only remedy that a doctor has for you is to cut your veins and bleed some of the bad stuff out of you, because we haven't invented anything else. But we have technology. We have the ability to calculate what is necessary to handle the backflow. This is not new technology. We've been doing this technology for decades. And if you have a company that tells you that they cannot do it, then you deny them a permit, and all of a sudden, they will acquire the technology to do it.
Amen, Reverend Doctor.
Last but not least, I would be remiss as a theologian not to tell you that the future of our kids is affected by what we put up in the air, and the futures of our grandkids. Ultimately, we're going to have to ban methane leakage from these wells. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
My name is Andrew Pitlik, that's spelled P-Y-T-L-I-K. And my, my, my dear mother recently had her entire kitchen floor torn up by a four-point something earthquake. Said it sounded just like a semi driving right through her condo, scared the crap out of her, knocked over a few antiques, broke those, those are priceless, so, you know, there's that. Down the road, at my uncle's house, he has water that isn't flammable yet, but if you put cellophane on top of a glass of water and let it sit for a little while, fumes that kind of, you know, get caught underneath that cellophane, you can put a little match down there and they pop. It's, it's water. We're not supposed to put that in your body. That's, that's messed up. So I, I moved from Ohio. I lived in Colorado for a number of years, and we all know how, you know, Colorado's getting fracked. They have slightly better regulations on where they're storing their toxic wastewater. Even so, when a big gully washer comes down, just like what happened this past summer, you get a whole lot of that toxic wastewater mixing with other standing water, which is, you know, then just absolutely terrible for your environment, for your cattle, for your farms, for the people living there, for your soil, for your air. It kills. It's messed up. It causes cancer, and it's nasty. So let's not let that kind of thing happen here. It's just, I mean, let's, you know, learn from those mistakes. That's stupid. That's stupid. You know, speaking specifically about some of, some of the rules that have been discussed, to think that we're going to put the burden of proof on doctors to find out what kind of chemicals are affecting their patients is just absolutely insane. To protect trade secrets, I don't know about everybody else in the room, but I'm pretty tired of our government protecting trade secrets in corporations. Protect us! Protect us! We need it. We are human beings and we need it. And there is absolutely no reason that people sitting behind a table like you can't exercise that kind of authority. Do it for the right reasons. Protect the people. I want to know what's in our water. I want to know what we're pumping down into our ground, and I have a right to know about that. Because we need water to live. That's the only way that life exists on this planet. And if we're going to use the stuff that we've got left, the fresh, the minimal amount of fresh water that we've got left, so that we can turn on the lights, then by God, let's find out what we're actually doing with the water. I think that's important. I don't know. Maybe I'm crazy. I don't think I am.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call two more names and that's going to be it. Karen Fort, F-O-R-T. And Drew N-E-N-N-I-N. Drew of UIC School of Public Health. Dylan Buser, B-U-S-S-E-R.
Buser.
Buser?
Um, I forgot.
Okay. Just have him come on up. Okay, Mr. Mike, is it?
Hi. My name is Mike Derschmidt. I'm an organizer with the Organic Consumer Association.
I'm sorry, would you spell your last name, sir?
D-U-R-S-C-H-M-I-D. My name is Mike Derschmidt. I'm an organizer with the Organic Consumer Association. We're a national organization working on food agricultural sustainable, sustainability and social justice issues. Mandatory labeling of GMO foods, factory farming, and fracking. In Illinois, we are 30,000 strong. There is no safe way to frac. The very idea of claiming it's safe in injecting hundreds of gallons of different kind of chemicals, of toxic chemicals into our earth and aquifers, many known carcinogens that don't break down, and many so-called proprietary chemicals kept secret from the public scrutiny is a whole concept that is ridiculously reckless. And if not for the politically corrupt Halliburton loophole to the FDA Clean Air and Water Act, it would be criminal. The practice, the practice will deplete precious water resources at a time we are experiencing increasing drought. Our farmers, our, our farmers and community need that water reserve. This practice will degrade and destroy our water resources in a way that is unrecoverable, as well degrade air quality, as well the communities they operate in. The track worker in other states and countries prove how hazardous this practice is. Can this be regulated? Well, the bill as written is already way too weak. It allows for those polluter gamblers to still do business. This industry is constantly experiencing accidents. These are not just mishaps. The reckless business model plans for, for fines as a doing business expense. Let's try that $50,000 a day to start with. Heck, I'd go $1 million a day.
Jail time.
Jail time is good, too. This idea, this IDNR regulation is even weaker than the already too weak bill. You guys need to fix that.
Yes.
And then some. Example, the so-called fines as low as $50, how will that be a deterrent to destroying our farms and homes? I didn't even know about that $2,000 for a loss of life. How ridiculous is that? That's a real deterrent. Who wrote this? The industry? I'm serious. It's not just a joke. I'm serious. It sure sounds like it. Serious violations. The frackers are asked to list in the past five years what serious violations they did. What the heck is that about? I want to know all the violations, no matter how far back it goes. And if a serious violation, they need to not just pay a fine, a huge one, but all serious violations should require mandatory loss of the permit, no exceptions.
You have 30 seconds left, sir.
Is the corporatocracy alive and well at IDNR? I think so. With this draft attempt of rules, the political corporate hatchetman and women running the IDNR have just proved itself as not just inept, but incapable and without the will to regulate frackers, let alone stop them. Even more proof, the timing of this holiday, the ti, this holiday timing of these hearings. We need more hearings. One more paragraph. Either make the rules prohibitive to all frackers or turn this charge, this charge you have back on the policymakers, telling them only a ban will do.
Thank you, sir. Say, Mr. Is it Casto?
Uh, yeah, Casto. Yeah, hi. My name is Kevin Casto. That's C-A-S-T-O, so no R. I'm a member of Southside Solidarity Network at UChicago, the Iron Student Network, and I'm also here with Fair Economy Illinois. First of all, I would like to say, I would like to demand, not just request, demand that the IDNR extend the public comment period until after the holidays and provide more hearings, particularly in Bloomington and Chicago. The only hearing so far in Chicago is today, a day and a half before Thanksgiving, with only 12, with only 11 days' notice. And that's totally ridiculous. And there's no hearing at all in Bloomington. So these rules that you've given us are as such are absurdly weak, and there are so many points that you could pick from, and as people have just been talking for the last two hours. But I like to focus on the risk of large-scale environmental disasters. So even though Section 153 of the regulatory bill requires that fracking operations be conducted in, in a manner that will protect the public health and safety and prevent pollution, the rules do not at all address the risk of large-scale and widespread environmental disasters that can occur as a result of fracking, specifically in the Wabash Valley and the New Madrid earthquake zone or in the Illinois 100-year floodplain. The New Madrid earthquake zone has been known historically to cause major earthquakes of over seven on the Richter mag, sorry. The New Madrid earthquake zone has been known historically to cause major earthquakes of over seven on the Richter scale. The Illinois Emergency Management Agency itself identifies these areas with its most severe earthquake zone ratings of destructive and ruinous. An earthquake of these magnitudes compounded with fracking and injection wells spread throughout the affected zones is quite literally a recipe for disaster. Injection wells have been known to trigger earthquakes in areas without major active fault lines, and to allow any fracking at all to occur in the New Madrid or Wabash fault lines is putting the lives of thousands of Southern Illinoisans at heightened risk of devastating earthquakes. The only sensible solution to this is to prohibit any and all fracking along the Wabash and New Madrid seismic zones. Whatever profits, whatever profits that corporations stand to gain from fracking is not worth the kind of human catastrophe IDNR is putting us in danger of. IDNR cannot be allowed to play with human lives so carelessly. Furthermore, earthquakes of these magnitudes can easily damage injection wells, fracking wells, open air pits, and major pipelines, causing toxic and radioactive fracking fluids to pour into the ground and contaminate the soil and groundwater sources of hundreds of thousands of Illinoisans. IDNR would not only be responsible for the damages directly caused by the earthquake itself, but a toxic chemical disaster created by ruptured pipelines and wells. Similarly, allowing any sort of fracking operations to occur within the Illinois 100-year floodplain zone is also asking for disaster. The environmental devastation caused by the recent floods in Frack County, Colorado, is case in point. Inundated oil pads, flooded wells, overturned tanks, and ruptured lines were just few of the, of the horrific images of toxic chemicals spewing all over Colorado. Open air pits, of which we can expect many due to IDNR's loopholes, are particularly vulnerable to floods and would only compound the disaster. And finally, I just want to counter this idea that the, the train has left the station and that somehow like these legislations are just being made and we, we have a little time, you know, to complain against them and to point out all these loopholes, but then it'll just proceed apace. Because I just want to say that if these are not, if these regulations are not seriously, seriously made so that fracking is actually safe, then we can, we the people, you know, the people who you're trying to ignore by scheduling so-cue hearings and scheduling over the holidays, we can push J-Car to reject these rules, and we will do that unless we make these safe.
Hi, my name...
Hi, my name is Dylan Buser, and I am a member of... Is this working?
Yeah. Just pull it down a little bit, Dylan. B-U-S-S-E-R?
B-U-S-S-E-R, yes, that's correct. I'm a member of the Iron Student Network, and I'm here with Fair Economy Illinois. And like a lot of people, before I begin, I would like to request that the IDNR extend the comment period until after the holidays, as well as provide more hearings, particularly in Bloomington and Chicago. It's only fair to assume that the, that the fact that this hearing was scheduled a day and a half before Thanksgiving and with only 11 days' notice that that was done on purpose to make sure that everybody here would not show up. I would like to first start by saying that any rule, any regulations, any scientific research that needs to go into enforcing those regulations and any regulatory procedures should not be at the cost of the taxpayer, but that bill should be sent to the oil and gas companies who are going to be making this money from fracking. And the specific section that I would like to speak to has to do with the health professionals' access to the information about the chemicals used in the fracking fluid. There are tremendous health and safety risks that come with pumping tons of highly toxic and radioactive water deep into our bedrock, but the actual chemicals used are, are kept secret, so not even doctors and healthcare workers know what toxins have been involved when they see a sick patient. The IDNR rules impede the ability of affected patients that come in contact with these highly toxic fracking pollutants to acquire immediate treatment. Even though these laws require that the IDNR provide health professionals about the chem, with information about the chemicals used in fracking when necessary to treat a patient, the rules provide a circular definition of what an effective, what an affected patient actually is. There are over 353 mysterious chemicals that can be involved, and so doctors simply cannot just run a few tests when patients come in as a result of an accident or some, or exposure to these chemicals. To make matters worse, the rules given, the rules give medical professionals only one of two options in the event of a medical emergency, to either call the IDNR during normal business hours or to call a trade secret holder. The IDNR gives no indication of how one can go about identifying who exactly this trade secret holder is, or how one can actually go about contacting them in the event of an emergency outside the IDNR's business hours. Worse yet, both the, both the IDNR and the trade secret holder have complete discretion when they want to share information about the chemicals involving, involved in fracking regardless of medical necessity. This is important to me. I, I grew up in a small town and I, I drank well water my entire life. I've had a mom and a grandma both die from breast cancer. And when my mom died a year and a half ago, I said, I promised that I would fight to make sure that our public institutions are making sure that more carcinogenic chemicals are not being flooded into these areas where we know that environmental risks are increased, are involved in the increased incidence of cancer. So I'm here demanding that the IDNR do its part in making sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, Karen Fort, is that right?
Yes, Karen, K-A-R-E-N-F-O-R-T. I'm a board member of the Second Unitarian Church and here with the Social Justice Committee. Our religion asks us to affirm and promote the respect for the interdependent web of all existence, of which we are a part. And there's a larger ethical calling that brings me here, speaking for the planet, the people. I also want jobs for the people who live in Southern Illinois, and there is much work that needs to be done. There is just transition. We can move towards a sustainable, low-carbon economy. Crane's Business Magazine has just joined BICEP, the Business Initiative for Climate and Environmental Policy, and they are stating that preventing climate change is the greatest economic opportunity of our time. Those low-income rural areas that face increased pollution impacts for many of the same reason that urban communities of color face increased pollution. Small towns, rural areas often support any project that promises any kind of job, no matter how dangerous or deadly, because they are desperate. They see no alternative. But I want to hire these people to build us wind farms and solar power and geothermal. Climate change by the time... Unless we can, the methane, which is 37 times as harmful to the stratosphere as carbon dioxide, down. Their lives depend upon you having long-term vision and being not politicians, but statesmen. no matter how dangerous or deadly, because they are desperate. They see no alternative. But I want to hire these people to build us wind farms and solar power and geothermal. Climate change by the time unless we can keep the methane, which is 37 times as harmful to the stratosphere as carbon dioxide, down. Their lives depend upon you having long-term vision and being not politicians, but statesmen.
If you would like to turn in written comments, please bring them to the front. If you would like to take a few-minute break, we will take a few minutes to meet and back and try to summarize the comments and come back in less than five minutes and sort of give you a summary of what we heard tonight based- Otherwise, thank you very much, and there's no need to wait. But other written comments will accept up front.
...